Hey, well, good evening. Today is August 19th, 2024. This is our second meeting of the month. This is our six o'clock PM county commissioner meeting. We're glad that we have company here tonight. Usually not a whole lot of folks here, so it's good to see you here. We're gonna start as we usually do. We're gonna have a pledge of allegiance tradition here. And also, we're gonna have a prayer for our chaplain will come forward. This prayer is a, it's a prayer for the commissioners. It's not a prayer for you all. You're welcome to listen in if you like. We've got a lot on the agenda tonight. And the most important thing to us is that we ask for wisdom because even all added together, we don't know everything. We don't know a whole lot. So wisdom fills a lot of gaps for us, right preacher? So we're gonna ask him to come forward and pray for wisdom for us as we do things on behalf of the county commissioners. If you'll join me, we'll get started.
Let's pray. For we come to the nine county commissioners, your Lord, and the work they do, Lord, and preparation they've made for this meeting tonight, Lord, for you give them the divine wisdom they need to make the right decisions, your Lord. Thanks for the dedication they have for this county, your Lord, helping this meeting tonight in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic with which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Chaplain Taylor. Is it raining inside, too? Okay, we wouldn't think that.
Yes, we would.
Yes, we would, he says. Well, thank you, Chaplain Taylor. All right, I've got some changes for this week's agenda. We're gonna add as item HH on consent, some contract change orders, SES field services, that'll be item HH. Also, there's a rail walk in our local agreement sent over by tourism. That's item II. And then I would just point you to consent item D on budget amendments. There was for contract 24015 just been updated and you've been provided the information there, but I need to update it for the records for the public. As far as deletions go, on the regular agenda, item four, item four B, that is gonna be remove the legislative hearing for Sun West Business Park. That is gonna be postponed until the October 21 meeting, so remove item B. And then we're also gonna remove, removal would be consent agenda item U is an umbrella since it's raining. Public hearing request for EDC Project Seattle. Well, that's about appropriate, isn't it?
It is.
Yeah. So that's a lot of changes. So do we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? All right, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So now we've got a different looking consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I do.
All right, and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we have a public comment period. Do we have anyone sign up for public comment? All right, first up Bobby Kemp. Bobby, welcome.
Can you hear me now?
We can, yes, sir.
Good deal. I know last time I had had trouble with that. I won't, I promise, I told you, I won't be here but just a few minutes. Didn't even plan on coming tonight, but and out beating the bushes, going up down the roads and sidewalks and highways, talking to people. Had some questions come up and I don't have the answers to them. Y'all may not be able to give me an answer tonight, but I wanted to propose them to you here in just a moment. But as y'all know, my main concern is our veterans and our seniors and disabled people. And I've talked to people out knocking doors that's gonna see a hard time this winter because of either staying warm or eating. And I know we can wonder, you know, why we find people in that category like that, but we need to all remember that at one point, this was a textile country. A lot of textile people here, and those people didn't make the income, a big income. They made a fair income, they lived, they raised their families, but they didn't have a big income. And what I mean by that is, come retirement age, most of them didn't know about setting anything back for savings, and some of them didn't have it. But they don't draw, draw a big check. I talked with a lady and she asked me not to mention her name, and I promised her I wouldn't, but she gets $1,258 a month social security, and she gets a $59 pension check through the mill. Now, that's not a lot of money when you're, the cost of living and everything's the way it is. And I won't say anything more about this, but I did want to say this. I think it'd be good if the county could come up with some kind of a senior give back program. I know it was brought up that there was no way to be able to track people by their age, but we can certainly track them when we need to send them a bill for their taxes. When it's time to register a car, you get a notice if you don't do it. And there's a way to do that, and I put some thought into it, if it would be possible, even to issue them like a $300 give back this year, just to help them, maybe say at the end of December, first of January, that's when their power bills are the highest, and cut it at a $300 limit and make it so they had to live in Rowan County for at least a year to get that and not to go over the $300. And then they could even bring their, bring their power bills in to the tax office or somewhere like that, so we could see how much they were. If they were $400, they only got $300. If they're $200, they still got $300, but cap it off at $300. I, I think that would be good. It'd be a good incentive to try to show the people that we care about them. Book over, Bible over, and Book and Jude said that some having compassion make a difference. And I know you're compassionate people. I, I know that. But we need to show the people in the county that we care about them, because some people, this tax increase that hit them all at one time was not prepared for it. You know, we make plans to go on vacation, we'll settle a little back and things like that, but bam, there it was, and they couldn't do anything about it. Y'all consider that, please. And I wanted to ask you tonight, I sit in last meeting, I had to leave because my sister was rushed to the hospital, but I did watch the rest of the commissioners meeting a couple days after that, and it was talking about Knox School. Some of the questions that I've been asked is, is it really $55 million to build a school? Because everybody's heard different figures. I, I don't know. I know there's a $73 million bond y'all are looking at doing. I understand that, but that's, that's $18 million over what it costs to build a school. And the only thing I've heard talked about was roof repair. If the schools had the roof repaired, they should have been done when they started leaking instead of waiting, they all piled up at one time. As a young man, when I went to Boston School in the first grade there, I remember going down the hallway and there'd be pops sitting out in the hallway catching water. Well, Principal Ethan Shive at that time, he got on the phone, and the next day, there was county work trucks there, and they took care of that problem. That's a lot of money to throw out there at one time. And I wanted to ask you, too, about before, when they were looking to do the addition to the school, there was a grant applied for. I don't know what happened to that. Was there any money issued for the grant for that? And also, they had a COVID-19, the school board did, an allotment there, I think. And I found different numbers on that, but the smallest number I found was over $49 million. Is any of that money left that could be applied to the school? I know that it has to go to certain things, but I certainly know it'd pay for doors and windows, heating and air units. I, I know that much, that it would do that. And, and the other projects, you know, I haven't, like I say, the roofs you're talking about, the leaks and plans that has to be done to that, I know there was probably bids that went out on that. I hear there's more than one contractor's bid on the roof, and they're gonna try to get them all done at one time. And I wonder about that and about the school. And I know a little bit about the contract business. When the general contractors went out, the bids went out, did any of the bids go out to the general contractors here in Rowan County? I know some of the contractors, and they tell me no. And I wonder, too, did any of the DBEs or WBEs or SBE enterprises, were they offered in this work? If you're not familiar with those terms, that's disadvantaged business enterprise, that's women's business enterprise, small business enterprise. I'd like to see some of our people in the county get some work off this deal. If we're gonna spend that kind of money, I'd like to see some people in the county be able to do that. And I promise, Mr. Abbs, I'm just about done. I'm hurrying, my friend.
That's all right. You're a couple minutes over. You keep going.
Also, I put a lot of thought in this North Elementary School and the repair work that has to be done there. And I know that, I heard you say that the county's obligated to do that. But also, we've got a lot of people that live down the southern part of Rowan County here that's in the overlap of the Kannaplu City. And they're paying Kannaplu City tax. In other words, they're living in Rowan County, they're paying Rowan County tax, but they're also paying Kannaplu City tax. Seemed to me like we ought to get together with Kannaplu and say, hey, look, we got X amount of people here, that's paying you city tax, you should take care of the school. There's like 530 students there. I think there's some ways that we could trim our budget a little bit and, and not have to hit, hit another tax raise in the near future or anything like that. I'm, I'm really praying about this, I am. I'm asking for God to give me the wisdom to go forward with some things in my life. But I think that we, like I say, we can, we could cut a couple corners there and do that. And also, I was wanting to ask, I know when any of the schools was sold, I know I talked to one of y'all about this some months back. I understand that sold for $500,000, a $2 million deal. Nobody wanted to buy it because it was $2 million. Somebody did want it because somebody did buy it, but they only paid 500,000. If that $500,000 went to the school board, is that money not there to help build this school? I mean, does the Rowan County School Board have, have any money? Do they have any money left over from COVID?
Hey, so, so perhaps maybe what we could do, because we don't, we don't have time to answer all those questions.
I understand.
So it might be good, and I'm willing to do this, there's a lot of questions you have that are, the answers are very simple. I'd be willing, and I'm gonna, Aaron's gonna look up at me here in a second. I'm willing to meet with you and with Aaron and his office. A lot of that stuff is just basic stuff.
I'd be glad to do that, sir.
Like with Kannaplu, we don't pay all of Kannaplu's schooling.
I know that.
We split that based on folks that live in Rowan County but go to school in Kannaplu schools. And so we, we do, so a lot of those are, are some answers that I wouldn't have known when Jim and I and Judy ran for office.
It's hard to find some of those answers.
Yeah, but, but we, kind of traditionally, we don't get into a question and answer during comment.
I know that, sir.
It's for you to, for you to comment, but you've got my number. If, if you want to call me.
I'd be glad to.
I'm happy to set up a meeting with you and myself and Aaron and our, or also our finance director, and we'll answer any question you like and look forward to meeting with you.
Just one more thing I wanted to say.
Oh, boy. Okay.
I understand that the demolition work's already been done. It was approximately $700,000. If that money's already been paid, do we need to add that into the minus sign off to 55 million?
Uh, no, we wouldn't.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good to see you again. All right. Let's, uh, we're gonna move on. We have special recognition. Commissioners, if you want to join us out front.
Jack and special, special granddaughter, if you would come on up, too, because we'll have pictures at the end. Well, this is a special, special day that Jeannie and I have been talking about for a long time. Earlier this year, Ms. Jeannie Moore received the Order of the Longleaf Pine from the state. I've known Jeannie now, oh my goodness. I moved here in 2007, but I don't know when we really got to know each other, but through church, yeah, through church at St. John's and Blair, yeah, yeah, and Jack. But I wanted to present her with a proclamation from the commission for all of the work that she has done here in this county. It's really quite amazing. She was one of the key people in this county that put together a program to help those people who were laid off at the largest when cannon mills closed. And the jolt and the trauma of that was so incredible, but this woman put her mind to it, and she came up with a program that helped those folks. And so I wanted to, as she has now gone on her way to retirement, I wanted to share this with her on behalf of the commissioners. So this is a proclamation honoring Jeannie Moore. Whereas Jeannie Moore began her service at Rowan Cabarrus Community College in 1977, where throughout her tenure, she held various roles showcasing her strong passion for education from adjunct faculty member to her distinguished, distinguished position as a senior level administrator. And whereas, Ms. Moore was known throughout Rowan Cabarrus Community College as a positive leader, problem solver, and relationship builder, and she consistently demonstrated her exceptional leadership skills and dedication to students and the community. And whereas, Ms. Moore's most notable achievement was her instrumental role in spearheading what became known as the Pillow Text Project, a collaboration between Rowan Cabarrus Community College and the Governor's Task Force made up of state and local officials. And whereas, Ms. Moore also served as president of the North Carolina Community College Adult Educators Association and co-director of the North Carolina Community College Leadership Program, as well as serving on the Economic Development Commission, and became the very first female chair of the board in 2008. And whereas, Jeannie Moore retired as vice president of Advancement and Continuing Education at Rowan Cabarrus Community College and received the prestigious Order of the Longleaf Pine Award for the lasting impact she made on the institution that spans decades of service. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Rowan County Board of Commissioners does hereby honor Jeannie Moore for her exceptional contributions to Rowan Cabarrus Community College and her unwavering commitment to educational excellence and to the citizens of Rowan County. Ms. Moore's legacy will continue to inspire and shape the future of Rowan Cabarrus Community College and community for years to come. This 19th day of August, 2024, signed by our chairman Greg Eds and Clerk Sarah Pack. Congratulations.
Aye. Just want to say thank you. This is, I've been retired 10 years, but I'm still an advocate for Rowan Cabarrus Community College, and I'm certainly an advocate for this community. And I'm still out there. You may not see me in a suit and heels, but I'm still out there trying to make a difference every day. We've got some wonderful organizations here, a lot of nonprofits that give me a purpose and a meaning in my life, and I'm just grateful that I'm still here, and I'm grateful that we're still, still talking about this project, because a lot of folks didn't think we were gonna be able to do it, but we did. Thank you all. Thank you, Jeannie, so much.
You're welcome.
We had journalists from out of the country here doing reports on Rowan County. We still hold the record for the most jobs lost in a single day. Y'all hear me talk about that all the time. That was a tough time. It was a different time. We had folks leaving their job in ninth and 10th grade and going to work for the, for Pillow Text or the mills, right, Jim? And lost their job, and they were living in mill houses. And it was, it was a, a big project for Rowan Cabarrus and for Jeannie and for this community to really bring folks along that never saw something like this coming, thought they would retire with these institutions much later in life. So that's a, a time that Rowan County can really be proud of, of being able to bring those folks along and, and back into our now growing economy. And so, again, thank you. That was a big deal, a big time in our, our county's history.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say that I've known Jackie since my hair wasn't gray. We were in the service together a long time ago, and I won't tell anything other than we've known each other a long time. And one of the amazing things in my life is that Jackie got this beautiful woman to marry him, and they've been married for years and years and years. And I, I thought Jeannie had better judgment than that, but. Jeannie was one of the most capable people that I've been around. We were in, on the EDC board together, and they let me know the, the first meeting that I was sworn into that if I decided to write a letter to the newspaper, I would have to be like everybody else on that board, and it would go through Jeannie Moore and would be corrected the same way that she did her English class when she was teaching school. So Jeannie has been in charge a long time, but sometimes you don't realize it.
That's a good one.
But they're fine folks, and, and it couldn't be, the Longleaf Pine couldn't go to a better person. She has supported us for years and years and years, and we appreciate Jeannie so much.
Thank you, Jeannie. All right, we're gonna move to our regular agenda items. Item Z07-24. Shane, welcome. Good to see you.
Good evening.
Can you pronounce it, Pirand?
That's a good question. There's several LLCs involved, but I'm gonna call it Pirand USA.
Okay.
Let's see. Bear with me one moment. All right, so the subject property here we're speaking of is located at 155 Jenny Drive. Again, the owner, Pirand USA LLC. The applicant for this rezoning request is the Bogle Firm by Mr. Pete Bogle, who's here tonight to represent the applicant and owner. So let's look at first at the area of the county. The site's outlined in red here is off Old Union Church, just below 85 and interchange, kind of between Crane Creek and Lakeport Drive. Site's about two and two, or excuse me, three and two-thirds acre. And you see that little, there's a white line beside the property boundary, and it continues on up. This is Jenny Drive, and it serves two other lots with, have houses on each, on each, so three lots, two houses, and then the one business that's here. This is from, that oblique photo, about three years old, prior to the current owner purchasing it. And what you're looking at here is the result of back in 2003, the property owners decided to open up a auction house. Back then, and of course, even today, with some differences since 98 and during the inception of countywide zoning, you can have a rural home occupation on your property. The Jennings family lived just north of this in the pine tree area here, had a house there, and they built this auction house. It's 14,440 square foot, and the family operated it until some point prior to the sale in December of '21. And the current owner, maybe a few changes on the LLC names, by and large, it's the same owner. They purchased it in December of '21. It's currently used as a electric race car manufacturing facility. And again, with a change of use, she would need to rezone prior to that or obtain a special use permit if they were just sort of a seamless transition from one use to the other, no expansion. But neither of those things occurred. So partly the request here tonight is also not only to address the expansion, but also to take this existing site plan, which is the, somewhat matches that aerial photo we looked at here, and zone this from RA to CBI CD, CD Conditional District, to address the manufacturing, the race car facility, and also accommodate an expansion. So let's look first at the site plan. This is the property.
Is that small scale electric cars or is it trucks?
Full size. Yes, sir. Here's the property outline here, and this textured area is gravel for the operational limits, and Jenny Drive extending off Old Union Church along the property line edge, and then continues on up. See the building here, just over 14,000 square feet? And the expansion is 15,000 square feet, so about half again the size. And they would propose to add some additional gravel for truck movements to make turns to the back and the loading dock here. Does have a proposed stormwater basin that's required because we're within the municipal sphere of influence that DEQ requires that stormwater pond. And they have a little bit of additional gravel they'd put along the front, additional parking. But by and large, what you see here is the change. They would have additional landscaping screening to put in. Hard to know exactly the specifics because they want to utilize some existing vegetation on site, and it might be a wooden fence in addition to supplemental vegetation. They do have a use list that is in, or part of the site plan. And this is a very quick comparison. Anytime we compare the RA district, anything that you see that's not residential is gonna be rural home occupation. So we know if you have enough land, you can have up to 12,000 square foot under roof and home occupation. And any of these uses permitted with special requirements are a starting point to compare what can you do now, and then what could you do with a, a zone change. There's a lot of non-permitted section. This is a self-imposed restriction from the CD, the application, and there's a couple sectors in manufacturing that's proposed. A lot of these are transportation related, from building the vehicles to transportation parts, and miscellaneous manufacturing, metal fabrication. They do have heavy construction, building trade, and special trade contractor operations would be permitted and wholesale trade. There's a few things on the staff report on page four. I won't go into the detail, but I think a lot of that's just cleanup for what they were proposing versus what the ordinance allows in the table of uses. It's, I think, kind of a nominal shift there, but if we can, if you have any questions, we can talk about that. For the zoning in the area, anything south of Crane Creek, all this yellow, with a couple exceptions, is on rural agricultural. Crane Creek is the dividing line, so the areas here to the west, this is East Spencer Town Limits of the Aldi Distribution. South of Old Union Church and along Choate Road is East Spencer's ETJ. And all that section is on 85 ED2, very similar to ours. And the town's looking at any type of manufacturing distribution is allowed in those areas. And if you can. And if you continue on up above Town Creek, there's the Chewy operation here and then the Red Rock rezoned area in CBI. So everything else you see here is RA. Looking at the land, he's playing for some guidance. It's in Area 2, but it's just barely outside this corridor or Interstate 85, about 250 feet. Usually within that corridor, you have a, maybe a, you know, one move in the potential of a rezoning might be a maybe. It's not in the corridor, it's just outside. The planning board talked about that and actually included that within their statements about the proximity to that zone. The next thing you look at on a minor thoroughfare neighborhood business is generally appropriate and your starting point. Now, this request based on the allowance in the MB district did not work. So they needed more square footage. It's already over now if you consider the MB. So really, we're looking at CBI as the only option and the board may want to consider the last bullet point on an expansion of an existing business that minimizes conflict might be appropriate. And also compare that too with your purpose and intent statement in the CBI district that although the request does not meet any of the typical qualifiers, that this still may be, may exist or be created in areas otherwise not listed if it's compatible with the surrounding area and the overall public good served. So those are two things you could consider in this request. As far as traffic, we're under capacity on Old Union Church. And in the lower screenshot, you see a street view from Google. Jenny Drive is a gravel road. Plan said 10 foot, it might be a little bit wider than that, but probably 10 to 12 foot. Looks to be in pretty good shape, but one of the things that staff talked with the planning board about and the applicant is about paving this stretch. You've got commercial traffic using it and extending to the limits of the operational limit. I think that that would not only pave it 10 foot in width, but 20 feet, which is a requirement for the width by the former driveway permit from DOT. So a new driveway permit would be necessary, but also if we paved it 20 feet in width and extend back to that operational limit, that could be a condition of approval. And from all indications, the applicant was in favor of that at the planning board meeting. Public notice went out to seven adjoining property owners. I did meet with one of the owners prior to the planning board meeting. He attended that meeting and is here tonight, has some concerns I'm sure he will want to share with the board, but that's the only contact to my knowledge that we received. Procedurally, the planning board recommended approval unanimously and they offered this statement of consistency and reasonableness here before you for consideration. It's also in the report, very small text here, but on page seven of the staff report. The two conditions I mentioned, the pavement, number one, and also that modified use list, sort of that benign Band-Aid, if you will, to put on it on page four of the staff report. So in addition to that motion for the statement, we would need a motion to approve denier table. Any questions?
Good job.
Shane, I assume that this is on rural septic and well, correct?
Correct.
Where is that located in proximity to the expansion plan?
Septic area is up front.
Any other questions for Shane? All right.
The engineer looked at this area and before had some gravel that was proposed inside the buffer. And we said you had to pull that out. It's not permitted within the 20-foot section. And he indicated it's going to be tight, but, so this has a turn template that they use to access the loading dock. Mr. Bogle may can answer that more definitively, but in terms of how many they may have or outdoor storage, there's no indication or no standard that would regulate that. From the measurements, from the measurements, I believe they would take part of this down because this will be a 150-foot extension and it had a small section of gravel beyond that.
Okay. Can you go back to the aerial shot, please? So the septic system is located in the front corner by the road?
Correct.
And there's trees growing on top of it? Pump and hall?
You're speaking of the drain lines. The drain lines are usually, I mean, the tank, I'm not sure exactly where, I may have a copy in my folder.
Yeah. The reason I'm asking, and I haven't had a chance to talk to my chairman and vice chairman about this, but other commissioners, but we had a situation recently where some things happened and it could have affected public health and dealt with septic systems. And so I'm a little nervous right now. So I just want to make sure that it's in working order, you know, for the health of the people there.
In terms of this layout?
And then it's not going to affect, yeah.
The tanks are right here. I don't know if there's two on this layout. It has two rectangles. The supply line was discussed. I talked with Mr. Pruitt's office about that and he does have concern that they may have to, because you're going to be driving over that supply line and they may have to have some different encasement and look at that. But this is the big question, will the board rezone it? If you do, then we can move into the next steps. So that line runs approximately from here down the property and then to a point and then the drain lines run like this.
All right, anything else for Shane? All right, if not, then Pete, if you or the applicant, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Board. I am Pete Bogle with Bogle Firm Architecture at 110 North Main Street here in Salisbury. This one comes to you as a CBI/CD, Conditional District, request. Conditional District is designed specifically for instances like this. That's when I was Chair Planning Board, this is what we wanted to see, where there's an existing building that is now non-conforming because of time and changes of use and sells to different owners. A CD is a great way to then be able to continue to use that resource, that existing building, and to be able to expand and also to then offer the best protections for that lot and for the neighboring owner, property owners as well. CD allows us to be able to limit the number of uses that are allowable instead of a straight rezoning of a CBI that has 90-plus different allowable SIC uses, SIC numbers. We've limited this one to only six and they are centered around Mr. Erickson's businesses. He actually has two businesses. One is the electric race cars, which are phenomenal, by the way. If you ever get a chance, talk to him and go tour the place. But the other one is a fascinating business that he's looking to develop here, which is fast speed charging of car batteries. So electric vehicles, of course, as we know, a lot of electric vehicle or a lot of vehicle improvements happens in these R&amp;Ds through racing. And that's another fascinating one that he's wanting to do. So the setup is, and the expansion that we have here, his goal is that this is his business that he expands all the way into. As he's developing the business over time though, he wants to be able to build this and lease it as warehouse space, low-use leased warehouse space for the time being and then expand into it himself. One of the questions that was asked by Mr. Green was the different tractor-trailer trucks that were on site. The image that was there is actually from, I think it said 2021. So that's been the existing use. It's been, you know, what's been going on there in the site. Part of the purpose of this expansion is to be able to park the large trucks inside. There's, we've got a drive-through bay. He's, as some of our local racers do, has a nice rig that RV and great big trailer to carry the cars. So some of that gets put inside instead. Part of the, both, so both, the purpose is to, or the intent is to expand into the entire facility, but also while they are developing this business, to be able to potentially lease warehouse space, low-intensity warehouse space in this area. And only for the specific things that we have listed in those SIC numbers, which is all interior storage, nothing on the outside, nothing that would be a visual deterrent to the neighbors. The Type A buffers that are defined around the site, the ordinance basically has three different ways that we can approach a Type A buffer. It's either with existing vegetation, with newly planted vegetation, or with opaque fencing. And we've talked with Mr. Erickson and he's good with any of the three. So this evening, I actually spoke with the gentleman that's here that has a neighboring property there to see which would be his preference. And he actually asked if they could get a fence there. So that's definitely something that we would be up for doing along that property line and also along the other property lines if you guys would prefer a fence instead of the planted buffers. Also good with staff's recommendation of the 20-foot drive, paved 20-foot drive coming I believe that's all that I had on my notes here, just that this is a good way to reuse an existing building and be able to expand that within the context of the area that it's in. Andreas, did you want to come speak to the building itself?
Hello, hello everyone. Andreas Erickson is my name and I'm running Pirand LLC. So yes, I build race cars, but many guys do that, but we are a very green company. We make electrical race cars and we do fossil-free fuel and developing for that. So everything I'm doing is more in a way of green future and green mobile. I work with manufacturers and so on. I'm a developing center for things. So it's not a big business. It's not a huge, it's not a car factory. I'm building about 20 cars per year for customers all over America as well as I do in Europe. The developing of the electrical charging things is what I see very appealing because I see it's growing and coming and you discuss it probably every meeting. It's something that will come and I was a part of getting chem power from Finland here doing a factory up in Durham, Riley, which they were looking everywhere and they managed to get there and I tried to get them to North Carolina because I think that's where the biggest growth are. My role is more getting things to work, showing how a race car and a battery can be charged. So it will be some of that and my image is very important, so I will make it very green, clean, nice, proper. The building will be, I mean, I will rebuild the whole building. I've been waiting for, again, an approval. I want everything to be right and correct. But anyways, a green business, I'm trying to make it very clean and tidy. We also moved the family up, so we live up in the Woods Road up on High Rock. So we're trying to make this. I work in Europe and here, but I'm here more and more. So hopefully I can get this other business going well. I think the electrical car industry is, even if it goes up and down, will be bigger and bigger and who knows? I mean, I can be a, I can be good help of trying to understand what is important because I see what happens in Europe on the electrical side and what will happen in America with time. So yeah. And anyway, the business will be clean, nice, proper. My image is very important, so it needs to be nice and tidy when people come and visit me. And I don't want it to be in a big industrial place. I want it to be, you know, in the middle of where I am where it's all green and trees because that kind of works. That's why we're here. Thank you.
Pete, anyone else?
There are a couple of other neighbors here that, I don't know if you guys want to speak in favor or actually come up and speak, but glad to answer any of your questions as well if you need to call me back up.
Great.
Before you go, and I don't want to stay on this trucking issue, but if they're doing a lot of trucking in and out of there, are they going to pave where they're going in at? Somebody said something about entering on the far north side up there.
So the entrance drive is the same drive that's shown on the plan there. It's the existing one. And yeah, the pavement, the 20-foot wide pavement that was recommended by planning staff, yeah, they've agreed to.
How far in will it go?
To the extent of the building.
Okay.
The full length of the building.
All right.
There's an easement on that road that goes back to some other residential properties, so it'd be up to where that easement starts beyond their building.
No, I can add on that as well. We're trying, I'm trying to make the trucking, I have some containers going back and forth and so on, but I'm trying to make it very tight. I have four of my own trucks. I don't expect it to be much more than that. And we've done a cleaning bay as well where we have good, you know, so we can clean them correctly and green as well. So everything I do needs to be green and tidy, so I'm trying to make everyone. So my goal is to get people here to see new technology and how you can make it, you know, how it can be modern and how we can help. So I'm coming with a new kind of initiative. If it works, we'll see, but I think so. But the trucks is the same, we're looking, I work a lot with electrical trucks as well. Now I don't have it today, but obviously going forward is something I'm looking on as well.
I'm just concerned about the road going in. So I think the paving is a nice issue to, if you are planning on doing that, then.
I'm planning to do tarmac all the way in because there's a lot of dust right now. I want tarmac all the way and obviously where there's a very, very heavy loads, we need to have concrete.
Heavy load and gravel roads are not conducive to good neighbors.
Correct.
So I think the paving is a good issue.
And also I have in the container I need to make so I can load and contain, I can have it lift up and I can re-change without having a mobile crane going out and lift up and so on. So I'm trying to make it very safe, you know, nice and sufficient.
All right, Commissioners, any other questions for Pete or the applicant?
All right. Short straw, Kip was scared first.
That's all right. So what we'll do now is we'll open a legislative hearing and if you'd like to speak first, go ahead.
My name is Rob Sarno. I'm at 450 Jenny Drive, end of the road. So anything I do, I go past the facility. Andreas has been wide open book on the project and let us know all along what he would like to do. My wife and I are in full favor of the project because one, it's actually going to make it look nicer coming into our neighborhood. We try to, you know, there's only myself and Kip on our road and then the We try to, you know, there's only myself and Kip on our road and then the building. But, so we're kind of a little family, right? There, we take care of ourselves and everything, we want it to be nice, so we all take care of each other. And the beauty is, he's trying to take care of us with beautifying it. You won't see the containers like you saw now. Everything's going to be behind the building or inside the building, and it's going to be beautified on the outside. So, anybody we have coming by for our property values, in all honesty, it's a good thing. We're in full support of the project and look forward to it happening.
Well, thank, thanks for coming. Anyone else? Take your time.
Uh, I'm Kip Jennings. I built the building years ago, uh, and it was for a specific use. It was an auction gallery. And in that gallery, every Sunday, I sold items at auction. And, uh, we were in there 20, I don't know, 24, 26 years in that building and worked hard. Double five-eight sheet rock for firewalls on each side is, is built correctly. And we thought we did a jam-up job on it. I got the biggest bathrooms in that auction house you could probably live in. And we made it that way. We put diaper changers, baby diaper changers. So, we thought we really done something. And then Andreas bought the building, and I went in there about, I don't know, nine months, six or nine months after he took it over, and I didn't believe it. You can eat off the floor. Everything is perfect. Everything is in order. His people do not stop working. You don't talk to them, they work. And it's clean. It's, uh, we don't have a problem. It's, it's me and Robert, the only ones on that road, and I named that road after my mother. And, uh, my understanding is, uh, he's going to pave the entire area and get it set up for his trucks. And so that if the extensions agreed upon, you won't see those trucks in that picture if you take it again. They'll be inside, trucks and trailers. And, uh, but, uh, there's never anything outside. There's never anything that's, uh, made me want to go ask him, why'd you do that as a neighbor? And I, I don't have a problem with him. He's Swedish, sometimes I can't understand him, but we work it out, you know? But, uh, there's other people involved, there's other people going to say things, but when it comes to, uh, making a product and selling it, there, the people and some of the people that complain, they need to be asked what they are selling, because they are selling things. And I'm not going to go into that. But it's so close to Aldi's and Chewy's, and, uh, I think it would be a good addition. Like I said, I, I live there, I'm not going anywhere, I live in a log home. I'm 300 foot from that building, and he doesn't bother me, I never hear him. And he's gone six months out of the year. So, I'd love to have him, you know, there and get this changed for him, because I really don't want somebody to come in there and start putting washing machines and junk cars out in the parking lot. He doesn't have that. And if he gets that add-on and what he's trying to do, uh, that driveway is going to cut on back. That's going to be part of his land and the other part of the land. So, he's got the land to do it. And, uh, I mean, me and Rob both, we like him, and he does a good job. And he didn't pay me a whole lot to say this, so, uh, which is probably, it's for zero. So, anyway, you can help him, I appreciate it.
All right, anybody else? Anybody else? Yes, sir. Yeah, sure. Hey, welcome.
Thank you. I'm Luther Lyerly. I live at 500 Lake Fork Road. My property borders on the east and south side of the proposed zoning. I'm opposed to the zoning from RA to CBI, mainly for the following reasons. I don't really want an industrial site in my backyard, so I haven't had any problems out of the current owner, or Kip, when he had it at his auction house. This opens up potential for possibly undesirable industry in the future, um, if it's sold again, since it's actually been sold twice in the last two, three years, so. My children have proposed an interest in building on the lot next to this. So, it's, it's just undesirable for those reasons. Second, I'm opposed to spot zoning. There's plenty business, industry places in the county for businesses like this, and this is just picking out a specific spot. Nothing on either side of this is zone business, um, other than far away, like the Aldi plant and Chewy plant. So, third, this area is a residential agricultural area. It's within an enhanced voluntary agricultural district, so those are just some of my concerns, and I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Doc. Anyone else? Going once, going twice. All right. Hey, you want to come up? You want to come up here and do this? Hey, better, better, better? All right, we'll close the legislative hearing. All right, Commissioners, any questions for anyone who know what we're doing here? All right. Uh, one thing, um, I believe this did get full support from our planning board, vetted this, and they have, um, a statement of reasonableness and consistency, if you all like, I can read that. Everyone okay with that?
Good.
All right. Z O seven dash two four is reasonable, appropriate, necessary to meet the development needs of Rowan County, not previously envisioned, by the East Land Use Plan Area Two, based on the following. The East Land Use Plan states, Area Two Proposals for Expansion of Existing Businesses That Limit Conflict With Surrounding Residential Uses Through Design Standards or Impact Mitigation Techniques and Are Encouraged. Two, the current owners continue to be a good neighbor to those in the area. Three, the current owner runs a clean, green business. Four, the property is less than 300 feet from the 85 corridor, making this viable option. Furthermore, this adoption is deemed as an amendment to the East Land Use Plan, and so do I have a motion to approve the statements of reasonableness and consistency.
No move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then we would need a motion to approve Z zero seven dash two four, and I'd ask you to make it with these conditions of approval. One, install 20-foot wide asphalt entrance from the start of Jenny Drive at Old Union Church Road through the northern extent of the proposed operation area connecting to the driveway. And two, modify proposed use list with the additions as, or I'm, and deletions as noted on, uh, page four of staff report. And three, that we get invited out to drive some electric vehicles, which we hear are really cool. All right, not really. That's not, that's not part of it. Yeah, would like to see it. Yeah, would like to see it. So, do we have a motion to approve with those conditions of approval?
No move.
In a second. Any further discussion? Other questions? All in fa- oh.
Did, did we discuss anything about any border that's going in there, fence or, or any trees?
Shane, as part of this, can we just make it a, a third condition that, um, thank you, Jim, um, uh, that we have the neighbors work with, uh, the applicant on acceptable screening?
Screening.
I think that's reasonable, fences and options or evergreens, but if they have a preference, sure.
Okay with that? All right, that'll be our third op, uh, third condition. So, I'll mod, I'll modify, I'll make a motion to modify, uh, that motion, that a third condition of approval will be that the applicant work with the neighbors on acceptable screening. All right, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Then, uh, we have a motion in a second for approval. All in favor, say aye. Aye, all right, thank you. All right, well, good luck. Did you say, uh, uh, Sweden or Finland? Sweden. Aren't you Danish?
I'm Scandinavian, all three. Sweden, Dan, and Norwegian Viking.
I'm Danish too, so we should, uh, yeah. Cool. You're what? What, what'd he say, you're redneck? Eh, Maraca. Well, that's a good thing. All right, well, thank you all for coming. Good luck to you, and we'd like to see your facility sometime. All right, uh, the next item we have removed from the agenda, Z O eight dash two four. We'll move on, uh, to Red Rock. You actually got moved up to the second spot. Oh, yay, that's good. Shane?
All right. While this is identified as a rezoning, it's more of a text amendment, if you will. It just makes it confusing. So, rather than call it that, we just call it a amendment to the rezoning. But a little over two years ago to the day, we came, or Red Rock application came before the board, it was approved as a CBI CD conditional district. And just like we just saw on the previous application, the benefit of that too is, for the neighbors, when there's change, then they know it has to come back through the board process with some limitations noted in the ordinance. But, so, again, only thing that really changed from the ownership is Carlton Fields LLC is the listed owner, but it's just the same group. So, we're speaking about the six parcels that are comprised of the nearly 400-acre Red Rock project. It is still zone CBI CD, and our modification request, at this point, has nothing to do with the site plan before you. And for any citizens that may be here tonight or, you know, moving forward, there's, there's a, always a potential that we have to modify this again. It's, it's hard to develop 400 acres and not have, or envision everything and come to the board and not have to tweak a plan, but, and also, there's nothing imminent with this change. It's just adding a use option to the list, which I'll touch on in a minute. But, so this same site plan controls. If we add a use option to it, this site plan controls and all the limitations and adoptions for conditions that went with the previous approval two years ago. So, the proposal was a six lot, six building subdivision, 2.66 million square feet. It was approved. We have this certificate of approval, had a series of five conditions, statements here for sort of wrapping up that decision. And we go to the use list. It included a predefined list, and this red rectangle are two uses that we're adding to the option. And I've sort of loosely defined that as data centers. So, if you have a, uh, series of servers that are processing cloud data, AI data, Bitcoin mining, or anything like that, where there's a process going on, that's going to be a data center. The request would be to add these two, 73, 74, 73, 79, to our use list. No other changes are proposed. So, notices go out to the, uh, joining landowners. We did have a citizen that spoke at the planning board meeting. Now, in the report, which, just like the previous request, I try to give you the Cliff Notes version, and so we can expedite this, but if you have questions, let me know. But on a data center, as best we understand, I think the county has one in operation. It's maybe 44,000 square foot, has a series of server racks installed. It's not operational yet, but with that type of use, they generate a lot of heat, so they're air-cooled, liquid-cooled, and also they generate, or require a lot of power. So, just because we're adding this to the list, we don't know, and there's nothing imminent, but I believe there'd be a power study in order. One of the other things too, that can be a drawback to the data center is they can be noisy. And staff had talked with a potential applicant and kind of just hearing out a proposal, and there's a good chance from that previous site plan that we looked at, that once a definitive plan is determined, it may require another change. So, while these letters go out, folks think maybe the data center's imminent, we don't know. But at the point when a plan is formulated, we may get more into the noise aspect and some other things. So, right now, this is all about adopting a new use option and the current plan and conditions controlling.
Is the noise, generating the noise, exhaust fans?
I think it's the cooling components, the fans. I mean, it's very involved. I mean, using many megawatts of energy. But again, we don't know the scale of it. It could be 2.66, it may be 100,000 square foot, they all vary. The one that was in operation, or that was permitted, is, again, 47,000 square feet, and they had some cooling units to go outside, and they were going to be under the noise level, but they're in an existing industrial park mid-south.
Do you approve of these? What in there prevents? If, if the citizens would prefer?
Well, nothing would prevent it. It would just, you have the, the noise levels currently would control, which limit 70 decibels during the day up until 11:00 PM as measured from the property line. But if they can fit seamlessly in the site plan, then it wouldn't come back to the board. There's a good chance it won't, though. Is there a different animal? It's, we don't know yet, but this is the first step towards that of, we're adding that as an allowable option.
So, our current decibel level limit is 70, and it can go above that without another change?
We can, well, one, if you have a definitive plan, you can ask for a noise study, so you know exactly what you're getting. That was, from, from the conversation, if, if the one folks are indeed the ones interested, I think they're amenable to all that we talked about. Coming back to the board, presenting the plan, having everything out in the open. So, back to the procedures real quick. I think you probably could reference this, since these were adopted previously, unless there's some need for change. It's on page two and three of the pa, staff report for your consistency and reasonableness. One through eight, previously adopted, and then also those five conditions. Being no change from the previous request, in, in terms of the conditions and statements.
Okay, um, if no questions for Shane, then we're going to launch into a legislative hearing. Don't go very far. So, we'll open the floor. If there's anyone that would like to speak, oh, no, before I do that, let me undo that and, uh, ask our applicant, do you, do you have anything for us? Sorry about that.
Chairman, you know I can't be quiet, but, uh, I'll make a couple of things clear. We are doing a power study right now with Duke Energy, just to find out what the available power could be. That'd be a ramp over five, seven, 10 years. Duke Energy's working on that, just to kind of see what that would look like. Require substations, not substations, et cetera, et cetera. Duke Energy has been requested for a lot of these throughout North Carolina, so to cut to the chase, they now charge 250,000 to make sure it's legit. So, we made that investment, uh, may come back, they have no power. May come back, they have a lot of power. So, we're, we're supposed to have that next month. The impetus to this is two things. Our industrial park that we work on with another family, uh, down just south of Atlanta, we did do a data center deal there that came out of nowhere. It was right where a bunch of Georgia power major lines crossed. Never expected to do data centers, that's not what we do, we do the industrial buildings, of course. But that worked out to be a nice opportunity for that community. The community down there liked it because they were having a lot of truck traffic, it's right where CSX has a major intermodal center. So that creates all kinds of, you know, land rush to start doing industrial buildings. This one, on the other hand, was a huge investment, and created a lot of tax base, but basically created no traffic, because there's very few people that work there. So they thought that was a great idea to be able to not have those impact on the public facilities, but then go to quality of life in other places throughout the city. City of Fairburn, Georgia. Anyway, that being said, it got us scratching our heads, we had another inquiry up in right outside of Columbus, Ohio, where we have another development going where AEP is the power provider there, they have major transmission lines, we just sort of lucked into it, and another data center went in right next to us, where we're finishing up a million square foot building. That made us think, well heck, Duke Energy's got a power plant right down the road, and about the time we just started thinking about opportunities, was when we got inquired by somebody. We are not moving forward with them, they were a little too speculative, and I'll leave it at that. That being said, it did make us realize that there was a potential opportunity here, and as we said to the board and to the community from day one, we wanted to provide the best opportunities possible. As we know, the economy's not quite what it was two years ago, we do see light at the end of the tunnel, and I can, I'll briefly hit on that, just to give you the update from our side on that standpoint. So really, at this point in time, we are not soliciting anything for data centers. We're not talking to any data center providers, whether it's user-owned, like a Meta, an Amazon, or Google, or somebody like that, or a third-party supplier that some of the smaller users would use for their cloud operations. We're not talking to any of those. It probably would be air-cooled, there are ways to mitigate the sound if need be. So we can work through that as we need to, we want to, again, be, be good corporate citizens of the community. But I think those are all things we can do with enough land that we have, citing the building to be able to mitigate the sound, maybe some landscaping that can help bring that down, as you know, so again, we, I think we can work on that. The whole entire site is not feasible to be data center. If you took two point six million square feet and just turned it into a data center, that would take not an exaggeration, just about every bit of energy that's generated out of that Duke Power facility, just for that one development. That's just not feasible. That being said, it would still continue to allow for the job creation opportunities that we had talked about from day one, with the distribution centers, or other light manufacturing, or other things that are allowed within the existing zoning that it is. So all we're looking to do right now is to create the most opportunities we possibly can, not just for Red Rock, for the community, to provide for tax base, for the growth, however you want to put it. That being said, just to touch on the economy, right now, the, pretty much the trend is that Charlotte has, the Greater Charlotte market has about twelve million, I'm sorry, about twelve buildings that are five hundred thousand square feet and up. We expect those to be absorbed, we're starting to see a little more activity, which I know the EDC here is as well. We expect that to be absorbed middle part of twenty twenty-five to the end of twenty twenty-five, as we know, it takes about a year to build a building. So along with this request, we're starting to think about when we need to go. The two big triggers that are out there is the Fed, if they do the rate cut next month, how big that rate cut is, and if they do a second one by the end of the year. We don't know, we don't know until they do it, we all expected one or two by now. The other part is everybody's sitting on the sidelines, waiting to see what's going to happen in November with the election, then make their next plan. So, those are kind of the two things, but most people in our industry, whether they're here, or whether they're out west, or in the Midwest, or wherever, kind of all sort of have the same feel. That absorption's gonna take place in the existing buildings, allowing for new speculative development. Once a rate cut or two happens, and we get past the election, everybody knows how to plan for the future, at least the next four years, that things will start popping loose in twenty twenty-five, early twenty twenty-five. So, again, want to make it clear that we're not looking to change the whole entire thing, the data center may never be one that goes there. We could find out we have enough power for a small one, a medium one, something like that, and then that helps create just the opportunities there. So again, just, just looking to make sure that we have those opportunities for the county and for ourselves. Any questions?
For investing, two hundred fifty thousand dollars?
Yeah, feel free to talk to Tammy Wylie about that, but
Good luck.
Agreed, hope it's worth it, it will be worth it, just to know, you know, if it's if it's feasible or not feasible, and what is feasible.
Are they're big water users, but are they recycling their own water, or is it a constant buy?
It's not a constant buy, they're recycling their water, and most of them, what they're doing, in fact, the one that we're doing, we're not doing it, we sold the land for the user just south of Atlanta. What they're actually going to do is it's a, my understanding, and so it's very rudimentary, but they do a large, a decent draw in off-hours, pull it in, they use that for, I don't remember how many days it is, but then they actually do their own pre-treatment before they do, and then they do a slow release. There's some talk there, which, again, I'm not saying this would happen here by any means, just, they're looking at options there, is it possible just to treat enough, just like a typical sanitary system would do, that the municipality or the county would have, and possibly discharge into a nice-sized creek that's right there. So they're looking at many, many options with the state of Georgia, with the local Fulton County, actually, was who the jurisdiction is. And just to see what they can do. Now, that is for the water cooled, that does take a lot, they can do the air cooled if they don't have the water supply. We have spoken to Rowan Salisbury Utilities, and figure that out. And we're sort of working through that too, just to see what the potential is. Even if it's, you know, making this up, so please understand that, ten million dollar upgrades, three miles down the line to, to get rid of a bottleneck. Just kind of want to understand it, so we can, we can talk to any potential user thoughtfully and, and with a little bit of knowledge. Worst thing to do is have somebody get excited and just go, I don't know. So, we're trying to work through and get smart about everything before even, even if this gets passed, to let anybody know data centers are possible, but this is a step of a couple of different steps that we're doing concurrently.
All right. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions, commissioners? If not, then I'll read statements of reasonableness and consistency. ZO nine dash two four is consistent with east area land use plan and reasonable and appropriate based on the following, industrial land uses encouraged within the eighty-five corridor. Two, project complies with plans encourage use and extension of water seer utilities. Three, perimeter buffering and screening is proposed. Four, fifty-foot stream buffers provided. Five, three hundred and eighty-four acre rezoning area borders a one hundred and seventy-two acre area consisting of eighty-five ED one and eighty-five ED two districts to the west, and five hundred and eighty-five acre industrial zone area to the north. Number six, request complies with the CBI district's purpose of intent. By utilizing public investment infrastructure to provide tax base and employment opportunities for the local and regional economies. Seven, this property is identified by the Rowan County Economic Development Council as one of the best industrial sites in the county. Number eight, the industrial, conditional district ensures development will be limited through plan, so those, I make those in the form of a motion, you have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And then we would offer up a motion to approve ZO nine dash two four with these conditions. Reserve twenty feet along the south and north side along Ferry Road for future transportation needs. Two, add gravel or grass paper connections suitable for fire access along the signage to denote emergency access only as the following three locations only at the following three locations unless site conditions prohibit as determined by the fire marshal. One, employee parking driveway and west side truck parking access at building A. Two, southeast truck parking drive for building B to the truck parking drive on the west side of building D. And three, trailer parking for buildings E and F. Three, eliminate SIC subgroups, SIC four-two-two-one farm product warehouse and storage, and SIC five fifteen farm product raw materials. Four, all uses must connect to the northeast water, Rowan Water System. And five, outdoor storage must be located behind a building or otherwise screened with an opaque fence or evergreen vegetation from adjoining properties along Ferry Road. Motion? We have a second, other discussion? You know what, we opened a bit of hearing, and then I had you come up and speak, and we didn't ask, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak? I'm sorry. Wait, anyone? Anyone? Hey, hey, Mr. Wilkie. All together, we make up one brain. Pulled me out, and she was right.
Good evening, everybody, of my concern of my community about the road maintenance in the South Rowan area. When I'm speaking of twelve fifteen Party Drive and Party Lane, those roads that, I called a number about the first of the summer, they told me I had to bring that before the commissioner.
Yeah, that's, you, you did sign up to speak during the hearing, but I think we got you on the wrong sheet, this is for Red Rock Development. One coming up for BM Properties.
Yeah, we're concerned about the road, it's been maintained for forty years, and it's beyond maintaining, I need, we're concerned about it.
Hang, hang on one second, is that, is that the next one, Ed?
I, I was going to suggest that when the next item comes up, Shane can talk to this young man, I think he's probably got a DOT or a road maintenance issue. I don't think it's going to be something that we would.
Okay, I called a number, they told me I had to bring it here.
We'll, we'll, we'll try to get you squared away in just a second, but I don't think there's anything on the agenda.
We're gonna give you, we're gonna give you, we're gonna give you better folks than us.
I'll come back another time.
Introduce you to Shane Stewart, right now.
Thank you, thank you. All right, anyone else? Been a fun one. All right, so we'll close the legislative hearing and all right, we have a motion and a second, right, you have a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. BM Properties. Interesting name.
Look what they do.
All right, it's my turn.
Your turn.
You guys ready?
We are.
All right, so this is a legislative hearing for case Z ten twenty-four. It is a request from BM Properties to rezone three point two acres of Tax Map four fifty-seven, parcel sixty-three, from the Rural Agricultural Zoning District to Neighborhood Business Conditional District. The owners of BM Properties are Garrett Bean and Seth Mills. They have purchased Meyer Septic Services, which is located here at eighteen eighty-two Briggs Road, and they purchased that business back in twenty twenty, and they would desire to relocate all or a portion of that operation just two tenths of a mile north on Briggs Road to this site here, which is Tax Map four fifty-seven sixty-three. And this is a twenty-four Google map image, and you can see that they got a little bit ahead of themselves, but we're trying to help them with their application, but that is, that is generally the spot that they're occupying now. There is a septic land application site that's been permitted by the state, and has been in operation there for quite some time, I think you've got some paperwork in your staff report that, that elaborates on that a little bit more. But, I alluded to this just a moment ago, there's a site there, and, and we're getting to this application in somewhat of an atypical way which we get applications. We got a zoning complaint on April fifth. We sent our ordinance enforcement officer out on April eighth, and he conducted a site inspection, and right away noticed there were some apparent business operations, most notably, there's some Portageon storage that's on site, you can see a picture of that there. There is a building and, and somewhat of a whole building garage, what, what have you, that, that had been erected without permits. And so we sent him a, or sent them a notice of violation the following day on April ninth, and advised them, they basically had three options, you can cease operations, you can file an appeal of the ordinance enforcement officer's decision, which will go to the Board of Adjustment, or you can apply for a rezoning. So after some conversations with the gentleman, BM Properties applied for a rezoning in June, and so that's why we're here tonight. And one thing that, that the board may realize, but it's just good for the record to, to be sure it's known, is that when an appeal is filed, or rezoning is applied for, it generally stays any enforcement action. So technically, we've still got a zoning violation, but because they're in due process, there's no enforcement actions taken. So, if you approve this application tonight, then we'll work with them on bringing it into compliance. If you deny the application, then we're going to talk with the county attorney about a different method of enforcement. So, those are the two things that are, that are potentially coming up. All right. So, in looking at our zoning ordinance, suggests that we evaluate the current versus the proposed districts, and we'll begin by looking at how these districts are defined. So the RA district is characterized by a minimum level of land use regulations. It has, generally, if you look at it in the district, it has single-family housing, agriculture lands, it's also intermingled with some non-residential uses. Multifamily is discouraged, but the regulations are intended to protect residences there from adverse impacts from the most intensive non-residential uses. Shane talked this, talked about this during his presentation, but the RHO, or the Rural Home Occupation, provides business opportunities for those folks that live in the RA district. I characterize this, or like to call it, the residency requirement. So if an individual lives on or adjacent to a parcel, and they have state road frontage, they can conduct business activities on that site up to ten percent of the lot size, and the maximum building size is capped at twelve thousand square feet. So the applicant is talking about moving toward the Neighborhood Business District. The Neighborhood Business District, I would tell you, is more site-specific, it's not as pervasive as the RA district, so most of these sites that we're seeing as Neighborhood Business are ones that are coming to you guys, asking to be zoned or designated that way. So what do they do? It provides rural business opportunities for, for these type of uses, retail office, light manufacturing, and things that, goods and services that serve the community. The scale of the development exceeds the RA and RHO requirements, but it's not quite worthy of a CBI designation. Remember Shane talked to you about the building on Jenny Drive? It was too big to be zoned Neighborhood Business, I think it was fourteen thousand square feet. We know that the cap in the RA district is twelve thousand square feet. It's a little bit more in the Neighborhood Business District. Also, there's no residency requirements in the Neighborhood Business. The zoning ordinance tells us that it's generally appropriate alone minor and major thoroughfares, and in community nodes, and the site should consist of more than two acres. In one of our previous hearings, you heard a comment about spot zoning. So, if you look at the RA district, the ordinance tells us that it's already, or it expects that there's intermingled non-residential uses just in the way the district's defined. intermingled non-residential uses just in the way the district's defined. Um, in the CD district, we see here that, or the Neighborhood Business District, excuse me, the site should be over two acres. In this particular case, the site is three point two acres. So from a spot zoning standpoint, in terms of your analysis, you could say, hey, we've looked at these two things. We're, we think we're good. But when an, when an applicant applies for the conditional district, um, they commit to a specific use. And in this case, they've committed to seventeen eleven, a specialty trade contractor, which is septic tank installation, and seventy-six ninety-nine, uh, under the miscellaneous repair, which is the septic cleaning. So both of these, interestingly enough, are permitted uses in the RA district. The reason that we're, why we're here tonight is because the track doesn't have the thirty-five feet of road frontage for a rural home occupation, and neither one of the business owners are going to live there. So the next step is what we would say is the Neighborhood Business District. So when we look at the, um, area for its land use plan regulations or, uh, recommendations, we see it's in Area Two, which buffers, uh, the municipal areas. And it's that area that kind of transitions from a rural into an urban area. And there's no residential recommendations that would apply specifically to this. But if we look at what rural business recommendations are, um, it would be located on a road identified as a major or minor thoroughfare other than one that was identified as an NC or a US highway. Neighborhood Business District is considered appropriate for locating newer existing businesses. The MPO's, uh, Comprehensive Transportation Plan classifies Briggs Road, which this does have access to Briggs Road, as a minor thoroughfare. So there's a check there. And Neighborhood Business is synonymous with the term rural business. So this is just a generalized comparison of uses between the RA and the Neighborhood Business District. I'm not going to go through these, but you can see that a lot of these are some permitted, some permitted. As SR, there, there's a, there's a strong correlation between these two in terms of the similarities of the uses. And there is a reason why. Neighborhood Business District is intended to be that step between CBI and RA. It's that, that middle ground. It's not quite RA, it's not quite CBI, it's Neighborhood Business. Um, in this particular case, the applicant's asked for a CD. That means you get a site plan and it means you get a restricted number of uses. Again, they're asking for two specific uses. They're talking about construction, um, the seventeen eleven. Here is a specialty trade, that's septic tank installation and services, which is septic tank cleaning. Looking at the aerial photographs, uh, around the site, just north of the property is a ten-acre tract, uh, owned by the Shavers. There's not a residence on it, but it is in the present use value system, which some folks call farm use. Just south of the site is another ten-acre tract, um, owned by the Klutz family. It has a residence on it. East of the site is a twenty-six acre present use value tract that also has a single-family residence on it. And then the frontage on Briggs Road, there's five residences that immediately border the site. Um, also, the applicant's own a four-unit manufactured home park, which we're going to look at a little bit closer here. Um, it's parcel forty-five. And I said four units, but it's actually three. You can see that the property line is right about here in this manufactured home, which according to tax records is taxed on parcel forty-five, is actually on the parcel that we're talking about rezoning. So what we would recommend, or what the planning board is recommending, is that if you saw fit to rezone this red area as Neighborhood Business Conditional District, that you would likewise extend the manufactured home park district seventy-five feet from its current boundary to this point, uh, so that it captures this manufactured home. So in the future, if this home is removed, uh, damaged or needs to be replaced, it can be done so in a conforming situation. It wouldn't, it wouldn't be eliminated. So again, here you see that they recommended modifying the MHP district. Here's a couple of site photos. If you're looking north from Briggs Road, uh, this is the site in operation. If you're on the property, looking west toward Briggs Road, you can see the four manufactured homes that are there. Um, this is the non-residential storage structure that, um, was erected. There's an access road. We'll start here looking east from Briggs Road, but this is a private road that goes by the manufactured home park, accesses the site, and then continues on, um, east to, uh, provide access to the septic land application site. But looking from that access road, you'd see the, the land of storage for the Porta Johns. This is the internal access road. Kind of a panoramic image, if you're familiar with how they look when you take one from your phone. But this is looking north toward the Shaver property. I would offer one item here. It's not abundantly clear whether that screening is on the, uh, the applicant's side or the Shaver property. But we will hopefully have an item to address that here in a second.
The road is definitely on their property, but the screening may not be?
I can help you with that. Trees are on our property. Those trees are not air freshener. Just so I'm helping you. We'll get you out of the plane. The, the trees are our property.
You got a two-part question. I think the answer to the road is yes, and as I said, I'm not entirely sure about the trees.
You're, you're saying the screening in the tree, not the screening. How can that screening not be?
Oh, that screening, that, that sort of netting is on the fence of the, uh, see where some of it has come down? It's along that fence, that wire fence.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Is that what you're calling the screening?
Yeah, I was calling that screening, you calling the woods screening.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Different part of Rowan County calls it different things, right? Okay. So with Neighborhood Business, there are, um, probably about fifteen or sixteen special requirements that each application has to meet. Um, I'm not going to go over these, but I want, uh, individually, but I want to point out a couple of things to you. Um, I mentioned previously, the minimum zone lot size is two acres. They've got three point two acres proposed in this red, uh, box here that's laid out for you. Um, the building size, there's a maximum building size tied to the acreage. In this particular case, they proposed, uh, all their building totals, and this includes that existing one, um, is five thousand eight hundred and sixty-two square feet. They've got just over six thousand square feet remaining. If they want to add a new building in the future, they're going to come back through the planning board and they're going to come back to you guys to add that building. Okay? It's a site-specific process that requires that. Likewise, it's going to be the same for impervious cover. Um, they've got a maximum, and I think it's, uh, sixty percent of the lot size. The current is shown in this, this gray area here. Um, the proposed is this larger sort of gravel-looking area, and then you see what remains. Hours of operation, um, are tied to what's limited in the zoning ordinance. It's not proposed by the applicant, but this is, is what their limits are. Parking requirement, signage, there's no limit if they had any on-site. If they were to put a site or a sign out on Briggs Road, the maximum signed square footage is a hundred square feet. Shane talked to you about the noise limitations, um, in his previous hearing. Those are the same here. Outdoor storage, proposing to add fencing along this northern line, which borders that access road. And this eastern property line here, um, they would have a fence fronting or between them and Briggs Road and their manufactured home park, and the addition of screening trees, um, between them and the manufactured home park. DOT would require that they pave the driveway apron. We would recommend that they add some additional stone to eliminate dust along the access road. Um, I mentioned previously about their septic land application site. They should have those permits and, and documentation in your files. But we would recommend, or DOT would require, uh, a commercial driveway permit for this site. Talked about screening and buffering. Um, it's type A requirement in combination here. No outdoor display is proposed. I would submit to you that this hearing has been properly noticed. Notifications mailed to adjoining owners on August seventh. Property was posted those dates. It's been advertised in the Salisbury Post. Go through the process of the applicant comments after I finish. Then you have your public hearing. Be glad to step back up and ask or answer any questions. And then you got your consistency statement. Um, we'll just go through this real quick. Once the hearing is closed, we'll pull this slide back up, but it's got the, the planning board's recommended statement. Um, and then we've got the conditions that we would recommend that you adopt, um, with the, with the application. Any questions?
Ed, would we be consistent to have that mobile home moved off that piece of property that's, uh, wanting to be part of this neighborhood business?
Tell me that one more time.
Well, you had made the statement that neighborhood business, that you don't have residents there.
Right.
Well, if you consolidate that over to take care of that lot where that fourth mobile home is, then you have a residence there.
Well, what we're proposing to do or, or requesting that you do is zone, look at the screen here real quick, is this area be picked up as manufactured home park. I think that, that unit is occupied. There's not really, uh, there's no desire on our part to eliminate that unit. So really, what we're encouraging is that you increase the size of the manufactured home park district to make that a conforming manufactured home. We, we, we're not, it, it's not of a caliber that we, we would recommend that you get rid of it, at least from what I have seen. Um, I think there's a picture in here somewhere. Yeah, you can't see it, but I mean, they're, they're single white homes. They look like they're maintained well. I would, I, I wouldn't think that would be a problem for us. That make sense? We would, we wouldn't recommend it be zoned neighborhood business. We're, we're asking for two things. Uh, we're asking for that to be zoned, uh, neighborhood business, and then that small sliver be zoned manufactured home park.
Okay.
It's a good question.
Ed, give back one more screen if you would.
Um, I don't know, something's going on with the screen. Uh, my screen is changing here, but yours is not.
Right there.
Oh, really? Okay. What, what, I'm sorry, what, what slide do I need to be on?
One more back. Right there. All right. This property for thirty years has, uh, has been, uh, a leach field that, that Benny used and now these folks are using. And it will continue to be used that way.
Yes, sir.
Off the side of the gray area.
Yes, sir. Let me do this. So you're, you're, can you see the little hand moving around on your screen?
Yep.
So let me do this. Okay. This is, this is that area that, that on the site plan shows up as gray. They're looking to extend about that location to this tree line. This is where that septic land application site is. It's about six acres, six and a half acres. It's all back in here. They've got tanks, but you're right. It's, it's been in operation and permitted since nineteen ninety is what the state told me. So that's where they do, they, they plan to apply that, um, treated septic out in that, that area.
Well, actually, they're cutting down on the usage of that.
Well, no, not really. They're, they're not, that, they're not encumbering any of that area in this application. It, they're going to stop about this tree line is what they're asking for. And that septic is all over here. It's kind of east of them. It doesn't, not to confuse matters, but it's not part of this application. It's, it's really grandfathered.
It's not in the application, but it's part of their business.
You got it. That's exactly right. You got it.
Yeah, they've been using it that way.
I'm going to hop back up here once you close the hearing and pull that slide up so you can just read from that if you want to.
The applicant want to speak?
Hey, my name is Garrett Bean. Uh, I own Myers Septic. Benny Myers was my grandfather. Um, we purchased the business from him before he passed in twenty nineteen. Um, we got the business and we've got the land disposal field, SLAS, uh, eighty dash oh one, which is the parcel of the concern. Um, just to answer the question, our land disposal site is not a part of, uh, the actual building site itself. What we're proposing is to bring our operation in front of that land disposal site. Um, we've operated that land disposal site since the late eighties. It is inspected quarterly through the Department of Environmental Quality. We've never had any issues with that. Uh, it's a very well-maintained site. Um, but that site in a business sense for us is kind of the heart of our operation. Myers Septic produces, um, the majority of the wastewater disposal for the county on our behalf, as well as other local, uh, companies within the county, where when the Rowan Salisbury Utilities Wastewater Treatment Plan is closed, it often closes in the rain. It's closed on the weekends. It cannot produce, uh, wastewater, uh, disposal for grease, which is mandated through Rowan Salisbury's Fog Program. Our site is the only registered site, and we're the only registered pumper of grease and septic in the county that can do so. So separating us from that field, um, you know, it, it, it would be detrimental in the cost of the service, uh, that we could provide for the county. So what we're wanting to do is build our operation place since we no longer have access of eighteen eighty-two Briggs Road. Our, our current operations, um, our lease expires at that property in six years. So we're wanting to move our property across the street and resume our business in the same place where we have operated the waste, or, or the land disposal site for the last thirty years. Um, there has been some mentions of, um, kind of a, a visual disappeal of it. And to that, you know, we've, we've talked about the, the screening, both whether it be the trees in between the, the mobile homes, uh, and a fence or the combination of the two, um, as well as to the western side of that. Any questions about the property?
You want to move your office up there also?
Eventually, that is the hope, yes. Yes. So right now, when we, when we purchased the company in twenty nineteen for my grandfather, we were granted a ten-year lease on the current property, which is currently grandfathered in anyway. It's, it's grandfathered in residential. Um, but Benny's son inherits that property after my grandmother passes. So we've got lifetime rights or ten years to that property. And then once my grandmother passes or ten years passes, uh, then we no longer have access to where we've, where we've been operating since nineteen seventy. And, and that's the concern.
Going in the building?
Uh, just parking for trucks, truck storage. Uh, storing trucks underneath it and, and equipment.
I don't know how this works. At that lane in the middle of that property and there's, I don't know, are those bins or something?
Those are the holding tanks. Those are permitted, uh, through the state. That's where we store the wastewater. So we can't apply. So we can't apply it directly on the land. We're withhold, uh, we're withheld by the rules of the DEQ. So we store the wastewater in those tanks. We mix them with lime. Uh, we mix them with grease and other additives. They have to set until their pH gets of appropriate level. And once that pH reaches that level and the weather factors agree with us, then we can apply that septic to the ground as fertilizer.
Externally, it's, it's not seeping from those tanks to the ground?
No, no. And those tanks are inspected quarterly, as, as is the field. But that's part of our detention facility.
Nothing's really changing there.
Nothing's changing at all. That top field where we're proposing the building to go, nothing's there. We harvest the rye and fescue for the hay that we harvest on the land disposal site. But other than that, there's, there's nothing changing. So the actual disposal site is not shrinking in size, is not shrinking in, you know, in the capabilities of the wastewater that we can still dispose of on that land. The only thing that's changing is keeping us near that disposal site.
How long you been working with your granddad?
Since I was a small child. We've been running it since twenty nineteen.
Well, we're grateful you do what you do.
We try.
All right. Well, you'll still be here, so if we have more questions, any, any questions for the applicant for Garrett?
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you know? Oh, yeah, real well. All right, we're going to open the floor for a public hearing. And let's see if I've got anyone. Don Sher, is it Sherret? Hi, welcome.
Hey, you question about the buffer between the two properties? Those trees are our trees.
Yeah, where's your house here?
Well, you see the, the Rice Farm Road that comes around? Our, our property is that field right in between there. It's eleven acres right there.
So that's your field?
Yes, sir.
And then there's a house in a circle?
Right, that's where Tommy Owens used to live and Lonnie Rice's house back there. You can't see it, but on the Rice Farm Road there, uh, there's another two houses back in there behind, behind the waste disposal site.
So is your house one of these?
No, we don't live on the property. We live over on Goodnight Road. This property has actually been in my wife's family since nineteen forty. This is the grandfather's farm. Her father farmed it. She had hoped that someday that one of our boys would go over and build a house. But now that we're putting seventy-five portageons up against the back of it, I highly doubt that. I don't know anybody that won't load a portageons right behind where you may build a house. The tree line there is our trees. They're like oaks, poplars, gums and all. When it gets winter time, all those leaves are going to be off those trees. They're not going to screen a thing. So if you do, go along with this. We would at least ask that you put up at least an eight foot high privacy fence down through there, something tall enough higher than portageons, so that it'll screen it. The trailer park there, let the trailer be there as long as it can be there, but we'd be against you making a trailer park there. The trailers are fine. Benny was a good neighbor. Benny taking care of all this in good time. These boys here, their grandsons, at the other meeting, it's almost like they're expanding the business. They're told us that they're taking in waste from other septic tank companies, they're taking in waste from other counties. These trucks come in, they're sometimes they come in eight, nine o'clock at night and go out there and spread. So, you know, we'd ask that if you change the hours to a reasonable time, not eleven o'clock, you know, uh, you know, like say seven to six or something like that as far as operations. Because they go out there, if you see all the grassy field areas there, that's where they, they dispose of. It's all grassy area. And they drive the trucks around out there and they dump the waste out on top of the ground. That's how it works.
Has that, has the, have the hours of operations changed?
I would say the intensity's changed. You see where, where the little red thing is where Benny lived? Benny kept all the business back behind his house. You never even saw any of the business when Benny ran. Uh, Benny, you know, you see his trucks running during the day. Uh, you know, these boys, they're younger, they're hungrier, you know, they're, they're running the business a little bit more than they did probably. You know, Benny was getting up in age before he passed. But, you know, th- this is a business. Don't let nobody fool you. Uh, you, you look at it, you see all them portageons out there and all, and the bumper trucks and all. It's, it's a business. It's, it's not just serving the neighborhood. They're serving all over the county. They're taking waste from other counties is what they informed us at the zoning hearing. You know, we'd like to see them, you know, keep running the business, but run it, you know, either somewhere where its business is zoned or, or even just keep it backwards at, but right up against our property lines is not making us happy. And especially whenever, we know that when winter comes, the leaf comes off those trees, you're going to see every bit of that. So if you do, go along with it, we would ask that you at least put up a, an eight foot high privacy fence to hide it from our side. That's it. Thank you very much.
Any questions for Don? Thank you for, for coming. It's, it's good to hear your perspective. Hey Garrett, could we bring you back up? You know, life changes and events happen and will pass and there's handing down of properties and so you're trying to plan for that. You're six years out, so I actually appreciate you planning ahead of time. So that's a good thing. So a couple of, a couple of questions I have. You know, if you're trying to expand business, good for you. You know, I'm, I'm all for doing better and better and better. But my, my question is a technical one. There's probably only so much you can do, right?
Correct.
You can only process so much waste.
That's correct.
You, you can't take it from Georgia and South Carolina and there's a, a mathematical limit to what you can do based on, uh, rules and regulations set forth by DEQ and all of those others. Is that right?
That's correct.
Uh, I, I can certainly appreciate, and we've had this conversation a lot as our community continues to grow, we're, we're faced with things we haven't been faced with before. When you're not growing, I don't, well, there's things to complain about, but we're not having these discussions about kind of the my backyard type of issues. So with the issues of the portageon, is, is there anything that, uh, can envision you guys doing to relieve the neighbors of their concern about the portageon issue?
Yeah, I mean, absolutely. I think a fence is a hundred percent something that we plan to do anyway and, you know, we could definitely accommodate that. Definitely want to do this in a way that, you know, doesn't upset the neighborhood. You know, we, like the gentleman said, we are a business. You know, we are in this to make money, but also the money that we make from the community goes back into the community. You know, we, we live here, our employees live here. So, you know, we're, we're trying to do the right thing by the community, but, you know, we, we are a business, but not trying to step on the toes of the neighbors. So, you know, definitely interested in, in building a fence or, you know, whatever we can do to accommodate. We're, we're certainly flexible and I feel like we've got enough room on that track. Just, you know, the big thing to us is to be able to operate where we've operated. We're taking waste from other companies in this county. No one's pumping septic tanks or grease tanks when it rains without bringing them to our field. So it's not like we're opening a business venture to, you know, outside companies, outside counties. These are our local coun, uh, our local companies, Piedmont Septic, um, CAC Cedric over there. You know, these guys have full trucks and they can't dispose of waste and we're, you know, we're able to accommodate that because of this field.
Because they dispose with the city.
That's correct. This is the only, Rowan Septic has got a field, but they're not pumping residential tanks anymore. But this is the only active field in the county that is being served for residential tanks and grease in the county of Rowan.
So, um, as we move into recommendations. Got statements of reasonableness here. Ed, do we, do we, are there any recommendations here? Uh, one thing I wanted to note is we do see fences there and bear, but, you know, those things are falling down.
That's right, yeah. And we haven't really addressed that because we're kind of in the hindrance here. You know, those, those are pasture fences. So, you know, if we need to go back with something taller, the gentleman said he'd like an eight foot fence, you know, those, those are four or five foot fence posts. When this, when this kind of all happened, we kind of pumped our brakes on everything. So, you know, if we need to take those down and extend the fence, I believe our site plan calls for an extended fence as well as.
Are you good with evergreen screening?
Yes, and I believe that's in the site plan as well. Yes, sir. That was the plan.
So Ed, um, just to reiterate before we vote, we want to make sure these, we, we, we say often we are super pro-business on the board, but it's also got to mesh with concerns of, of neighbors and we are big property rights advocates, but for everybody, right? For you and the neighbor. And so we don't want to diminish their value in helping you do well. So Ed, could you, uh, I don't know if you have it or if you just want to tell us, um, fencing and screening per site plan? Do, do you have that on a, on a slide here? You've got the green ones there in between.
Yeah, so it's, it's kind of hard to tell, but there's a combination along this common district line. There would be the evergreen screening immediately adjacent to the manufactured home park coupled by a fence. Type A requirement is a six foot fence. So what I think I'm hearing, there's also a fence that was proposed in this location by the applicant site plan. I think what I'm hearing is an eight foot fence, at least along this line where those portageons are stored. I don't know that it would be as necessary along that line, but just from a visual standpoint, they may want to have eight foot at both locations just for continuity sake. Ed, you could make that requirement. I think the way they've got it set up now, it'd be, it'd be somewhat difficult. And this is if you're coming east off of Briggs Road, Briggs Road is here. You're coming up that access road that goes back to the septic site, going to be back down here on your right. And I guess they could plant evergreens here too, if that was what you were hearing from Mr. Shaver's comments. But, but nonetheless, I think what Garrett's saying is that an eight foot fence here would be agreeable to them. Certainly it's going to be depending on the type, but it should be an opaque fence that prevents that view, but.
Okay with you?
Evergreen standard, I don't know, right there? I would like to, but the roadway across the pasture is pretty expensive. But, uh, yeah, I mean, fence, evergreens?
Yeah, eight, I mean, eight, one.
Either both?
Where you've got that little fence, it's right there. Up there's a ton of good old seed. Or you're moving forward a little way to the other end, the other end for the building. Good old seed.
Good with that? Garrett, you good with that? Ed, anything else?
Personally, I would think if, if, I think Mr. Shaver's saying one or the other, I, I would tend to recommend just the fence there just because they've got a lot of truck traffic that, that uses that. It, um, I mean, I think.
They, they die too. We see a lot of them die and then, uh.
I think just, he wants visual separation. And visual separation, we can, or tend to think that can happen immediately. If he puts them up, those, those portageons are there, he shouldn't be able to see them. And so that, that can happen relatively quickly. You don't have to wait on them to, to grow, to fertilize. And that, I, I think in this location, the fence is probably the best thing.
You possibly thought the damage about that he's going to pay fifty foot?
Yeah, I, I did.
You are going to pay fifty foot, most probably.
I'm not.
No, definitely.
I'm not, no. Let me, you didn't hear that. DOT is part of their driveway permit requirement. Stipulate that they've got to pay fifty feet back off, uh, the, the.
I just see you justify it.
Yeah, yeah. But, but that is, that's much one of the requirements here that, that we would get into is that compliance with the site plan, modifying the mobile home park boundary to include that portion of parcel sixty-three. Attaining a commercial driveway permit from DOT, go apply tomorrow. That's immediately. Install fencing and screening per site plan immediately. Maybe we can work with them a little bit on the screening. We're going to be into the, the planting season sometime mid-September, first of October. Should be great time. Apply the addition of stone to the driveway from Briggs Road to the site entrance, kind of help with that, that dust issue. And then we'll give them a zoning permit and then he needs to apply for a commercial perm, building permit for that garage and they should be on go. So those are the recommendations and you've done this a couple of times, but you look at this statement from the planning board and then focus on that. I think, does that cover everything?
Can we just leave the mobile home right where it is?
They are.
Mobile home, that, that, uh, don't, don't.
I don't think it's expanding the park as much as it is being able to replace that existing unit, you know? Families have lived in that unit, so I mean, one, one unit gone is, you know, a, so I don't think we're wanting to expand the units, but.
Well, I mean, you stretch it seventy-five.
But unit for unit still.
Yeah, there, there's, there's not going to be another unit or two. It's just the fact that that mobile home can be replaced at some point.
So you're going to specify it, no more.
Correct.
You want to specify it. Almost these things are growing and we'd like to.
All right. Don't go sit down on me. Yeah, all right. We're. I was just going to say that, that, and, and I don't want to belabor the point, but. No, go ahead. Any expansion, if they wanted to add another mobile home there, they would have to come back through another process to do it. And it's not going to be worth it for them to even attempt to try that. No, we're, we're going to go their route. We're, we're comfortable with that. We know, well, I'm not even going to do that. I, I understand what y'all are doing. So let's, all right, we're going to move on. All right, is there, is there anyone else want to speak? Want anyone, anyone? All right, we'll close the legislative hearing. Ed, thank you. Garrett, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'll offer up, um, for Z one oh dash two four, the statement of reasonableness and consistency. It's reasonable, appropriate, necessary to meet the development needs of Rowan County not previously envisioned by Western Land Use Plan Area Two. Based on the following, the septic land applicant, application site has been permitted and operating since nineteen ninety without issue. Two, the neighborhood business is appropriate to provide rural business opportunities that serve the community's needs and proposed site exceeds the minimum requirement of two acres or NB designation, neighborhood business. Three, Briggs Road is considered a minor thoroughfare which is appropriate for NB designation. Four, approval will bring existing business into compliance and clean up the boundary lines of the adjacent mobile home park. Five, NB special require, requirements will be met. And so do we have a motion to accept those?
I'm with.
Say aye?
Aye.
And then, um, so we want to approve.
And then, um, so we want to approve then Z one oh dash two four with the six. Recommendations uh, that were read, compliance with staff prepared site plan, modifying M H P boundary to include portion of T P four five seven. Dash Sierra six three and a fifty foot buffer. Taking a commercial driveway permit from N C O D O T immediately, installing fencing as agreed upon here tonight. Uh, and screening per site plan immediately, apply addition of stone to driveway from Briggs Road to site entrance and obtaining zoning permit. Commercial building permit for garage structure, those are uh, recommenda, uh, these are conditions. Along with the approval of Z one oh dash two four, do we have a motion? Further discussion. Anything else, we good? All right, all in favor say aye? All right, thank you all for your patience on that.
All right, this watershed request is for Doug Foley, waiting patiently on the second to back row. For tho, those of you remember, Mr. Foley developed the Horsepower Park out west Rowan, and this is another watershed allocation request. If you look at the map here, Horsepower Park's off Shen Farm Road, South one fifty-two, near the Iredale Line. And anytime we have a watershed proposal, we look at our numbers to make sure our allocation and the bank and everything's looking good with our numbers, so. Don't want to mismanage that figure. I would like a job, so. All right, said, we, we do have still over a thousand acres to allocate, and the item that was. Pulled from the agenda that will be looked at in two months will be the biggest request we've had to date. So there may be some reference in this report to, to that figure, but we're still good. Again, have over a thousand acres. Mr. Foley has already been issued one on one twenty, one uh, eighty, one ninety-five, one seventy-five, and then one fifty, this is the request for. That subject address, these two lots, you'll probably see one maybe in a couple of months, have the site plan we've reviewed. It'll be a sort of a combination development on those lots. And ironically, this one will be in two months as well, so. All that'll be developed, that'll be good timing for Mr. Um, Bob Lyons for his proposal here. So let's look at the site plan real quick, again, these are kind of run of the mill, especially on a developed divi, division, the board approved the rezoning in eighteen. We've seen a number of these, so it's. One that a site plan comes before the board as a legislative action. You see a four unit, so this is a multi-tenant building as well, have multiple either race shops, warehouse, light manufacturing. Total's fourteen thousand five hundred and twenty square feet, believe it'll have a fire-rated wall for a building that size, it won't be sprinkled, but all that'll meet building code. So site plan meets the zoning standards, have been preliminary evaluation with the septic in the back area. So this request is for the allocation of that, that total acreage of one point one eight acres. And that, that allows up to seventy percent development. Here's, I won't go through these, but the request complies with the S and I allocation. Criteria in the land use plan and also the West Area Plan Two. Public notice goes out, nobody commented on this, I think a lot of the folks out there are familiar with this change that occurred last year. So for a year and a half, every request no longer goes and is a simple non-public notice request, it's now a hearing, but um. Planning Board recommended unanimous approval, statement before you's on page three, but I believe you can read this one, it's large enough font. One, two items here, and then also a motion for that and a motion for the uh, request.
All right, is Mr. Foley here? Yeah, you want to, anything you want to say? So the, are these, these are renting pretty quick, aren't they, this type, this size? Hey, come, yeah, come on, come on up to the, we're going to drag you up to the microphone one way or the other.
They are, they are doing well, uh, that's, you know, that's an area that for most of the race teams and um. Uh, individuals that are looking to get into small business type of opportunities, fabricating, chassis shops, that type of stuff. It does lend, we try to keep our square footage fairly small to allow a one or two or three person type of business to, to open up and, and get started. So, um, it is rare, once in a while, the last building that we had just built with Shane was a. A twelve thousand square foot and uh, we just had a classic car company come in there, and they took eight thousand square foot. And um, they are selling a lot of high-end beautiful cars uh, based out of that shop, I have to go by very quickly so my wife makes sure that I pick up the rent and don't spend it on uh, classic cars.
Oh, you could probably entice um. That's why we brought you up here, actually.
Yeah, I have a race car and uh, that, that's, that uses about all the money I have available, but uh, no, it's a great little area, um, we definitely get a lot of traffic there for. People looking for those types of shops, we try to make it slightly high-end, um, you know, obviously they're brand-new buildings, but we try and put stone in front, we try to do a, a, a nice look to them. So it's a park that uh, hopefully I can pass on to my kids and have something that's well-maintained and, and represents the community properly.
All right, well, we appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
All right, uh, these require, uh, we're going to have a public hearing. I don't know if anyone really wants to talk about this. All right. And uh, I'll offer up this state, um, reasonableness as a motion. Uh, S N I A oh three dash two four is consistent with the West Area Land Use Plan and reasonable, appropriate, inappropriate, based on the following, the site is located. Within a commercial industrial area, and two, the request is like four other S N I A approvals in Horsepower Park. Do we have a motion to approve those? Favor say aye? Then motion to approve S N I A oh three dash two four. Favor say aye? All right, thank you, good luck to you. Yeah, we'd like to come see your cars, yeah, thank you. Anna.
All right, so um, before you should have the approval resolution for the new school bond project, this is to authorize us to be able to. Um, go out for bids on these bonds, um. And just keep this project moving forward, um, in the documents, um, the principal amount is not to exceed seventy-three million dollars. Um, the interest is not to exceed four point seven five percent, and we should have it all. Paid by December first, twenty forty-four, and then it also authorizes, um, like myself and Aaron to sign documents that are needed. Um, to do this bond sale. Um, I have Amy Bentner here again, um, this week, if you guys have any specific questions.
Which, which ho, which hotel are you staying in?
And uh, Mary Nash, Russia, the bond counsel is um, available by Zoom if you guys have any specific questions, she is, yes.
So, we're doing this today because it's a legal issue, we couldn't do it two weeks ago?
I think they have to go in a certain order, I don't know, um, who wants to address that particular, Mary Nash, okay. Mary Nash, yes.
Good evening, nice to see you all over the screen, um. Yes, we had to get the documents to the point where um, what you were approving is in a substantial amount of loan. So these are the documents under which you will uh, promise to pay the bonds back. Also in the school, and you were also approving the offering document that will be used by the buyer. Of the bonds and the collateral.
All right, thank you. Anna, specifically, what does our motion need to be, what?
I believe you need to, um. Or you need to read the title, um, say that you're approving the um, resolution and that whole title there.
I know the school is fifty-five, how was, what was the rest of it broke down?
Yeah, so the school is fifty-five million, um, the roof projects are sixteen million. And then it was one point five six million for um. Kannapolis for the elementary school, and then the remaining balance is to cover closing costs and some items like that.
We do this, the fifty-five bond for the schools. Over budget, they can't use.
Um, that would be my understanding, because that's, is that not true, Amy's shaking her head, hang on. It's specific, each bucket is specific. Okay, yes.
Other questions for Anna? All right, uh, then commissioners, we have a resolution authorizing issuance of limited obligation bonds to finance, construction and equipin. Equipping of a new school in the Rowan Salisbury School System. Design, construction and equipping of roof prod, roof projects at schools within the Rowan Salisbury School System. And the construction and equipping of in addition to Fred L. Wilson Elementary School, the Kannapolis City Schools. Authorizing the execution and delivery of documents in connection with. Do we have a motion to approve that?
I move.
Second, further discussion. All right, all in favor say aye? Aye, any opposed? All right, Anna, financial reports.
Okay, so um, it's hard to see on this little um, diagram here, but we're back at July. Um, for our um, expenditures, and so there's a little star down at the bottom. Um, so our July cumulative expenditures are up one million over last year or ten percent. Same thing with the July revenue, um, there's a little X down there at the bottom that shows July, um, we're up two hundred and eighteen. Um, thousand or about eleven percent from the previous July. Um, property tax is cumulative um, through June, um, we are up nineteen point one million or twenty percent. From the previous cumulative total. Sales tax through.
What month, I'm sorry, is that April, June?
This was through June for property tax. Correct, sales tax is what lags behind. Um, so the next slide is sales tax, it is just through April, and as you can see, we are below last year's line. We're down about one point five million or um, four percent through April of last year.
But i, is that within budget though?
Still, um, and I brought that with me too, um, let me show you the next slide, which is just for the month of April, and then I'll. So for the month of April, we're down a hundred and twenty-two point five thousand or about three point six percent. Um, so we had budgeted um, thirty-five point six million for sales tax. We are currently at through April, thirty-four point five million. So we still have two more months um, of collections. So I expect that we will be over the thirty-five point six by the end of June, by the time we collect May and June. So we should be over our budgeted number, um, but, so, I mean, no major concerns with the budget. The concern is how far is it gonna, you know, is it going to keep trending down, or is it going to stay flat, there's just. I don't really have a, I don't have a crystal ball to know what's going to happen there.
Just watch the news.
Yes, absolutely.
Things are awesome.
Yes. But, I mean, as far as budget goes, we are, I mean, we should come in above our budgeted number for, for the year. Um, and then our quarterly investment report. Um, our um, bulk of our money again, still sitting at Capital Manager Trust, because the interest rate is. Uh, much better there at this time, um, and it's liquid within a day, so that's always a positive thing, um. And then, um, we have treasuries and agencies of about fifty-five million, those weighted average. Interest rate is like three point seven percent. And then we have three million in the money market. Earning about three point one percent, so through June, our interest earned this year, um, with Truist and N C C M T. Was eight point nine million dollars. Through investments was three point one million dollars. Um, keeping in mind that, you know, the bank interest is earned every month, investments, we don't recognize that interest earned until it matures, so.
So we've earned eight point nine million dollars interest.
That's just with our through.
Is that year-to-date, or is that?
That's this budget year, yes. And that's in all, now that's all funds together, it's all of our, so that's the landfill, the airport, like all the money together is earned that much.
Sounds like Jim Green's.
Want to buy you a new truck here.
All right, anything else?
I think that's it.
Uh, besides the economy question, what are our red flags?
I think, you know, right now, we're, we're good.
Come up with a red flag.
I'll, I'll try my best, I think that interest rate's probably the, the best one I got right now, so. Sales tax and the interest, what, what's it going to do, yeah.
Pierce, do you have a motion for?
To adjourn.
Favor say aye?
Aye.